So we will jump right to item two, discussion on a proposal to spend ARPA funds on broad hollow well upgrade to three-phase power. Mark, is that why you're here?
Being part of it, yes.
Okay, so are you the designated spokesperson or who's?
I didn't know it was on the agenda until I received it last night, so I'll be glad to help out with any way I can.
And didn't we already discuss this last time?
Yes.
We did discuss it two weeks ago.
So I don't know that we need the background. Is the question whether we spend ARPA funds on this or is the question about whether we do three-phase power?
I wasn't here last council meeting, so I actually have no idea.
The only question is, how come we didn't do it initially?
Probably funds.
Okay.
You've got single-phase power up there now. You've always had single-phase power up there now. We didn't change anything, upgrade anything. Three-phase power, you can't put a bigger pump in the ground without having real power. We've maxed out the single-phase line.
Oh, yeah, Corbett, you gotta.
Originally, you had single-phase power, you still have single-phase power, but that single-phase power is more than maxed out with what we're doing right now. And so in order to, I mean, in order to comply with what SESD wants, SESD doesn't want us to do more than 80% of the transformer capacity. And we're running the transformer at 100%.
So part of this, if I remember correctly, Corbett, is that we need a new transformer for, from SESD and they need to order that?
That's, that's the biggest problem with it is that the three-phase transformer is anywhere from 20 to 100 weeks out.
Have you by chance talked to Alan about that?
No.
Maybe give, you have? So, well, I'm saying, does, does Alan have one of these? No? Burgers are cheap. Maybe give him a call and just see, because I'm not sure what they've got down there they're trying to get rid of.
I talked to him briefly about it and he said, give him a call.
All right, so if there's no further discussion or questions that the council has, we'll move on, so, and we'll just make that vote in our actual council session. Okay. Thanks, Mark. All right, item three, resolution appointing an individual to serve as a building official for the city of Woodland Hills. Okay, so we have had some discussion about appointing Corbett and then appointing Dave as an interim building official. So anybody have anything further to add to that?
Would we decide not to do Ted?
I, I think that Dave will be, because with Ted, it would require more contractual haggling. So I just think that if we're looking for an immediate solution, and, and we are, just for the, the next three weeks, we, we would want somebody that we can move relatively quickly with, so.
And anyway, what we discussed in the, in the break, I'm kind of rethinking that.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, so Dave, Dave has graciously agreed and Corbett is also willing, subject to your own. I mean, I, so you've agreed with an asterisk. Okay.
Well, I think, I think the way to state that is Corbett is the building official. That's part of his job description.
Right.
Anyway, appointing him is kind of.
It's more of a ratification.
Yeah, it's a ratification. There is a need right now for an interim building official, so we're going to appoint that as well.
Correct.
Otherwise, the building, Corbett is the building official.
Yeah. Well, I'm glad you stated that. Yep. That's, that's my understanding as well. Okay, well, if there's no additional discussion there, we'll move down to item four.
Alan does not have a transformer.
That's on the record. Okay, item four, resolution establishing a community development committee. Carrie?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, this resolution is just to go along with what we discussed at our last meeting, so that we can go forward with the UDOT community development grant. It's pretty straightforward. We've discussed it and Jody has typed it up into a resolution format. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Carrie.
Yep, thank you. Anybody have any questions?
I don't.
Okay. And, and Carrie, as, as you and I talked about, and Ted, as we discussed a little bit, it sounds like, as far as writing the RFPs, I, I, we're all on the same page, it sounds like. So I talked to Carrie yesterday.
And I have, I have discussed it with Chris as well, and, and he and I were on the same page of, about how it would go forward with procurement laws with the state that it would be issued through the city. And he and I are, he and I are good with that, and if he needs to talk, he can, but yeah, we're gonna go forward as, you know, as, as per state law.
So, yeah, Carrie would have to be specific to our discussion. It's more about how, who puts it together.
Yeah, it's, it's who, who's assembling. So.
Yeah.
And talking to Carrie, it sounds like the committee would lend support, but it would be city staff that would draft the RFP.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's what, I mean, you get, you get the community involved in that process and it's gonna be just a, it'll be rough putting it together. It'd be very time consuming and tough for them not being familiar with it. A lot of education.
Yeah, and that, that was always going to be the case, that the committee would just assist, but this, this, I mean, that, that committee would assist and the city would write it. In the past, Chris has been heavily involved with that, and so he and I have talked and there's no problem there.
Ted, does that address your concern? Okay, all right. If there are no other questions, we'll move on to item five. Carrie, still you, resolution appointing members to a community development committee.
Yes, and this is similar to what we talked about last time as well. And I had put forth some names and I asked for if there was, if there were any other names that wanted to be put on there. I didn't receive anything from, from any of you or anybody else, and so I put forth the names as I presented them in writing last time.
All right, thank you. Any comment or questions there? Everyone knows who the names are and, all right. Very good. Moving right along, item six, request to remove emergency access sign at 310 South Maple. What'd I say? That, that's what it says here, but okay, you're clarifying it's an emergency exit sign.
It says emergency access on the sign. According to Selby.
I think it's a great idea to get rid of it.
Either way, it's gone.
So, wait a minute, why, understand why, why is?
It's a death trap.
Well, it might be, it might be a life trap under certain conditions.
Well, no, I mean.
Go ahead.
So currently, in discussing this with many people, we would need to do some work for it to work, because maybe Janet's Jeep could get down it, maybe.
My razor can, but.
Yeah, so if, if everybody's leaving in ATVs, we should be okay.
I'll just catch a ride with you.
But it's, there's some issues there.
So are we starting a trend then?
Well. Let me ask a question.
We've had the emergency access, for the 22, 23 years I've lived here, and it sucked the whole time.
Yeah, it was always bad.
But it was an access. Are we now saying that the standard for emergency access, it has to be paid?
Well, one thing that I think that we need to be mindful of is that it's hard for people to approach private property. That's, that's why I just found an issue, is that much.
Like we had on Eagle Nest, yeah.
People are utilizing it for recreational purposes, so.
Do we have a chain process?
On this one, it's even different. We don't even have it noted on the subdivision that's been recorded with the county that it's even a emergency access. We just have that we have a utility easement on it. But if you look at what's happened to that, it is, it looks like a dirt road.
Well, it is.
And we've got hunters using it, right? I mean, isn't that?
Yes.
Who's the property owner, Jody?
Selby, Don Selby.
So, does the city have right of way, you, you just said it's a utility. Is that all the city has? Even though it's been an emergency exit for 30 years.
And we only have a utility easement on the side property line. We don't have it even going across the back of the property where we have this.
Brother.
Trail going across.
Well, I, I think, I don't know what our chief feels about this, but if you can visualize people leaving in a real hurry, I mean, there's a fire in town and we have an accident on Woodland Hills Drive. Well, I guess it's just in that little section between the, the exit on Maple and it gives people another access if they had to use it. But I don't care if we move the sign, if we can still use it in an emergency.
Like the other one.
And not advertise it.
The other one we can still use because we still have our easement.
Yeah.
It's just not. Is that okay? So we can rip the sign out and still use it in a dire.
Well, I mean, the, the right would remain the same. It's not a relinquishment of right. It's just taking the sign down.
Well, I'm okay with that.
The relinquishment of right, the only right we have is utility easement.
Right, so that's, that's the other piece of it.
So I, I guess it's either an emergency exit or it's not. If it is, then we have to leave the sign. Otherwise, people won't know where it is.
That's, that was gonna be my, yeah.
If it's not an emergency exit, if we don't have permission and rights to use it as an emergency exit, then yeah, we should take away the sign and the property owner should be able to do what they want with their property.
So maybe just a thought here, and this is more my, I guess as much my engineering hat as fire chief hat, and that is, if it's, if it's designated as an emergency access, whether it's an access or not, either way is whatever we want to do. But if we're gonna leave it as emergency access, then I think we need to update the easement to designate that on the, on the plat, right? So, because right now, the city, in theory, we're not using it as we had said we would use it. We, we use it for, we're using it for a different purpose than we have right to. So we should probably update the plat, which requires some work with the property owners to do that. And then the second thing is, if so, we probably need to make it at least on, on the emergency side, a passable easement. If we're gonna use it for an emergency, whether we have the sign or not, that's, I mean, you know, obviously, it's a way out of the city, which is always good. It's towards the lower end of the city. But make it a passable, because the other, the other fear is, is that we get one car that goes down there and can't get past. Now you got a whole line of cars stopped and stuck in a fire that can't get out. And so, and it could be as simple as just grading it, you know, so you're not, because, I mean, we took a bug down there one time for training and, and, and I got blown up in theory, but. But probably we ought to clean it up, I guess, is what I, is what I'm saying. If it's going to be an emergency access, let's, let's make sure we're cleaned up and we're cleared with that type of access. If it's not, then we leave it as utility easement and, and that's what it is, but.
Keep going, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, and then I was gonna say, if it is an emergency access, let's, you know, I don't think it'd take much to run a grade or something down there to get it just cleared out so we don't create a hazard in the event of an emergency. That would put us more at risk.
So this is the week that we had the fire five years ago, or whatever it was, and it was super orderly, orderly when we left town. I mean, it.
We got.
There weren't flames in our.
We had four hours worth of notice, too.
Yeah.
This is way different.
This is if somebody's house catches a fire and starts to spread.
But, but even, those people aren't gonna say, no, you can't go out this way. I mean, I don't think, I, I don't think anybody, if, if my property was a way to get out, I'm not gonna, if my neighbor needs to get out, I'm not going to deny them access.
No, I don't think that would happen in an emergency, but it's right now, we've got a sign designated.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's the part that I, I agree with Ted.
Ted, you gotta.
It either is an emergency exit or it's not. Right now, it's, it's not.
Right.
We're infringing on their property owner's rights.
Do we, so do you, do we need it, Ted? I mean, as fire chief, do you see that as something we need? So if we, I mean, if, if, if it's something that we deem as a necessity, then yeah, I agree with you. Then the next step would be to approach the property owner, but like you said, Janet, it's hard to imagine, I mean, they're already unhappy with the fact that people are using it. So why would they want that to be an emergency?
Before the smart guy talks, let me just interject here. It's more to me than an ex, an emergency exit. It's a route to a safety zone. That big area down there, through the fence, you crash the fence and go out into that area, that's really an excellent safe from burn zone. So, go ahead, Ted.
I, I mean, I think it's been an emergency access for quite a long time, and if, if we want to keep it that way, I think that'd be great. We can, we could probably use it as an emergency access. In the event of a fire, I think it'd be, you know, an escape route for some of those on Maple. Assuming something happens over on Woodland Hills Drive or something like that, or if there's traffic too backed up there to get out of town, this is another way to get out. Which is usually the case, is, is more so than anything, is traffic just gets backed up and stopped. If you look at some of the fires in California and all that, all the cars you see burned, it's, it's not because they didn't, it's because they got backed up trying to get out of town. And they eventually had to flee their cars, and this is just another way to get more traffic out of town. But the other thing is, we're also crossing our city boundary. I think this emergency access actually goes into Salem. Now, I don't know whether that's neither here nor there, because if we have an easement from the property owner, that's really all we would, all we would need.
Can we add to the sign, emergency use only?
And that would be the other thing. We would have to come up with a way, if we're gonna leave it signed, to keep people from using it. Because there are, I think where this initially came up is there were some Jeeps and stuff flying up and down that road. And they shouldn't be doing that as a four, a drive of, no, I know it wasn't you, but there, there were some Jeeps that were seeing, flying, you know, liking to use that as a four-wheel drive opportunity for them to go test their four-wheel drives and stuff like, that's where this kind of thing, kind of came about. And so that's what we've got to figure out how to stop, whether we do that through a breakable gate or something like that, but.
I just wonder if we could add to the sign, just put a little sign that says emergency use only, and that.
You might want to put, emergency use only, private property, no trespassing, or, you know, prosecutors will be flogged or something, or violators will be flogged, or.
They have to be the building officials.
Yeah, you have to be a building official.
It sounds to me like it needs to come out until we get easements.
Yeah, I mean, right now, we have no right to call it anything because it's not ours, so that would be, so if it's something that we need to ask, then we can ask.
I don't think easements are there because of the utility, because the utilities typically require a property.
Right, sorry. Yeah, no, Mark's just chomping a bit, but you keep stealing the mic.
Property owner. Because we have, like, you know, when we subdivide properties, five, any property line is designated utility easement in a plat. I think that's the only thing we've really got there.
Mark?
I would, just giving whatever was in hand in the last three, I don't know, this is more labor myself, but yeah. The discussion about, do we have rights to easement, as David said, it's been being used, or what's been used for over 20 years. I think by state code, everybody knows what it's been used for. We do have a scripty easement to that property. So by that right, we'd have to double check it, but I think by that right, we probably do have an easement. And to follow up on what he said, yeah, maybe just take a grader to it. It may get to where, you know, minimal passing so it can be used. You would need to maintain that. It's just not something you create once every 30 years whether it needs it or not.
Yeah, I, I mean, the, the sort of condemnation route, I, I know, and we've talked about it, Wayne and Ted, I, I think it would be, well, first of all, I, I don't love that approach, just taking anybody's property ever, even if there's a.
Prescriptive easements aren't really holding up in a court of law these days.
Yeah, they're, we're finding those with a lot of irrigation companies right now who claim they have prescriptive easements, and they're, they're not holding up very well.
The other thing to that is, has it been used?
Yeah.
Not that it's been, not that it's been designated necessarily, but has it been, you ever used it?
Right.
For emergency exit.
Yeah, and, and, and I think that that, if we're gonna, if we're gonna designate it, if we want it, then we need to approach the property owners and ask, I think. And if, and if they say no, then.
And pay possibly.
I expect that that will come up, too. And probably put some signage that doesn't allow Jody and Janet to do their Jeep Safari. All right, so.
For the record, it wasn't Janet and Jody.
It wasn't, no. We're just being funny, sorry.
Oh, yeah, okay, probably a clarification worth making. All right, any, any additional discussion there on that?
Let's do it right.
Yeah.
Item seven, June 2023.
I'm sorry, do we want to make an assignment for a council member, somebody to approach Mr. Selby and see where he's at on it? And so that.
That's a great suggestion.
That can be advanced if, what needs to be done.
How about our new building official?
No, I think, I think our roads official.
I, I know Dawn very, very well. I'd be happy to talk to her.
Am I doing that? Okay, good suggestion. Thank you, Ben. All right, item seven, June 2023, interim financials and check approvals. Chris, which?
I got him right here.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep. Yep.
Okay, great. Yeah, nothing, so just those interim financials, the term finances for June will be, what they audit, that will get back in November. The audit's gonna start the second week in November. Yeah, actually, it doesn't get done till December. So we'll have those final ones for you then, and then really nothing too exciting on the July financials.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Anybody have any comments or questions? All right, that's seven and eight. Item nine, update on city grants. UDOT grant for community development, Carrie?
Well, if after the vote tonight, if we inform the committee, then I will work with Jody so that we can get something for a first meeting, something on the calendar. So we'll wait till after the vote and then we'll report next time.
Okay, very good. And then how about ARPA?
And the ARPA funds, if we're going to approve that three, three-phase power to the well, to use the ARPA funds for that. So that again is up to the council vote.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, Ted for fire, and then Ted will also just jump to E. And are you on F as well? Is F?
I can.
When you're on a roll, me as well. Okay, will you address those items then?
Yeah, so on the fire side, there is a grant opportunity that is available right now. It's, it's due September 30th. I'd, I'd like to apply for it. It's one that we, we've done in the past a few different times, but it's the fuels reduction mitigation grant. That we, we would typically apply for. It does have a 25% match to it. You can apply for up to $20,000. And I think we've used it in the past to help with some of our chipper day stuff. You know, the, the match would obviously probably come from the fuels reduction budget that we have. But we spend that money anyway, so I don't think it's hard to match, and we can also use resident time and whatnot. That's why, you know, we've had them report on the website and that kind of stuff, so. That grant's due September 30th. It's under the ready second old program and just make you aware. But I'd like to apply for it again. It's something we've done. Please do. That's the fireside.
Okay, so, and then do, do we historically, I'm, I'm trying to remember, like, are, are we gonna vote? Are we just kind of getting feedback right now?
So I think we, we talked about the grant policy, and I don't think we have to vote.
It's just an FYI.
It's just an FYI. It's just informing the council that we're applying for this grant. Here's why. And if there's time-sensitive nature to it, this one isn't.
And matching funds mean something, too, so, but we don't.
But no one has any concerns, and so, okay, perfect.
No, because we've got the budget.
Okay.
We have the one we've used to get the chipper, some of the chipper stuff done, when he's got the bins up here and stuff like that, same, same program. We ran out this year and that's why we couldn't get county's chipper and had to rent one a couple days ago. What was the next one? I forget. Oh, the water, was that the water?
Yeah, water line replacement grant.
So this is kind of a ask for forgiveness type grant application, rather than, it's, it's how I approach most, most, most of my personal life stuff, too. I don't get permission, I get forgiveness.
And Ted is, Ted is deflecting the blame from me because I also, it, it wasn't until after the fact that I gave him my supportive that, that. And then I realized, oh, you know what? I think I might have just violated our grant policy in so doing. So now it is something that we are trying to get your support on.
So can you give us the details?
Yeah, yeah, so this was a grant that came out through the governor's office of economic opportunity, GOED, we call it for short. Last year, the legislation set aside $50 million for water infrastructure projects to go to communities, to help them with water infrastructure. It, it came out, like I said, through the governor's office, and the application period was open like July, August 17th, and you had to August 30th to get it in. So it's kind of a quick turnaround application. There's no commitment in the application, other than to just fill it out and give them your project. So we submitted an application for replacing the rest of our six-inch waterline in the community, which is about four and a half million dollars. We don't know yet what they'll, they'll offer. It can be either grant, it can be loan, it can be a combination. They review the applications, they decide whether to give you grant money, loan money, a combination of both, whatever. We don't know yet. And I'm, I'm assuming, because it's, they're fairly, it's not a lot of detail to it, so we'll have to see what they offer and decide whether it's acceptable or not. I'm assuming they're gonna give you a chance to turn it down if it doesn't fit your financial circumstances, but they don't ask for any, you don't make any commitment to that upfront. It's just, here's what we need, here's why it should be, you have to explain why you think it should be grant versus loan, and that's about it, so.
I have a question with that, because originally, Ted, that's why we were holding on to our ARPA money, was to use the ARPA money as part of the match for the water replacement grant, and we never sought, we never sought, so we now have kind of moved that on to the three-phase power. Will we, will that be a detriment to this water line replacement grant, not having something in place?
I don't think it'll be any, I mean, maybe a small one, but I don't think it'll be any more so than if we didn't have any match dollars. Because match to 400, 4.5 million that we would have been able to offer, I don't know that it would have, you know, given them a whole lot of.
They told us originally that even our small amount, just showing that we were 100% committed to our ARPA funds going to water line replacement, that that would be kind of a, you know, an offering, not, not a match, but an offering that showed how important this was to us. Do we need to reconsider the, the three-phase power and put it towards this water line replacement? Or do you feel like we can stick with what we have now, kind of gone down a different road? And, and it won't be a deterrent for the water line replacement grant?
Yeah, I don't think it's, I don't think it would really influence either way to offer that. One, we couldn't, because the application's already submitted, and you can't retract it. And secondly, if this is like the last funding that came out through the state, this, there was one that came out through the state treasurer's office about two years ago. They had 50 million they gave out. They got like 350 million in applications, so it was very difficult to get the money. And one of the criteria of this one is you have to show how you will, how it gives the city an economic advantage. Which in our community is a little bit challenging, because how are we growing our economy with replacing six-inch line? I don't know. I mean, I tried to make up some, some stuff that made it sound like it would help our economy, but I think there will be. So I, I guess the bottom line is, Carrie, I don't know that we would gain a whole lot through offering that with this funding.
All right, thank you. I'm glad that we're going to, that we have applied for this. It was, it's something that we had told the citizens we were gonna do. So hopefully we get it and move forward getting this done. Thank you, Ted.
If, as a result of the work here, we tear up a road, does any of this funding help cover repairing or restoring that road to its, to its condition prior to ripping things up?
So one of the costs we included in there, a lot like we did with the last waterline project, one of the costs we included in there was a pulverize and repave the entire road with, with the waterline. So in that four and a half million was included, the cost to redo the whole road.
Okay.
Yeah. It just, because our road. It just because our roads are.
Yeah.
You know, the.
A new two foot.
Should I? Well, maybe I should save it for now. I was talking to one of our engineers today because we were talking about a pavement management plan, so I was talking about what would it take for Woodland Hills? Got on Google Earth and he flew into a couple of our roads and he's, oh.
That's not what you want.
Anyway, um.
That's what residents say as they're driving.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's not funny.
Which is another discussion we have. Anyway. So that was the water infrastructure one we put in.
Okay, any further comments or questions on that one?
We'll just have to wait to see what they offer and if if we're selected, what would the offering would be and how we'd move forward.
Great, thank you. Technical assistance grant?
Was that the one that's for the planning?
Municipal subdivision ordinance technical assistance.
So the state through the Division of Workforce, Workforce Service Services is offering a hundred percent grant money to communities to help them with their rewriting their ordinances for a lot of that legislation that came out last year. Um, that a lot of cities are now having to change their ordinances for. The, there's an RFP out right now through workforce services for engineers and attorneys to qualify to do this, to help communities with this work. So our our planning group who works with the city, RCC, they're submitting that RFP, I think it's due this coming week. The state will qualify people. And once they're qualified, they can then offer, or they can work with the state to help communities get access to that funding to rewrite their ordinances. So the short of it is, the city has to have this done by December twenty twenty four. Um, some of them have to have it done earlier. But, um, I think there's a mechanism there to be able to get access to this funding to help the city rewrite ordinances, have planners help them rewrite the ordinances.
Does it cover legal expenses for ordinance review? I mean, directly related to ordinance?
Uh, it will cover everything that this, from what I understand, and I'm, our planning group knows more about this than I do, but I understand it will cover all the costs that the city incurs in updating or changing their ordinance related to the legislation that came out. So whatever that might entail.
Yeah.
Reviews.
I I can add a little bit to that, Ted. Um, it's the subdivision ordinances that the state legislature changed this last year. And so they, in addition to, um, changing it, they funded this, um, technical assistant grant. And I wanted to publicly publicly apologize. I, um, misspoke a few months, a few meetings back because we've been talking so much about moderate income housing and this subdivision ordinance change, and I had completely intertwined the two, and I wanted to apologize. Um, because it is just subdivision. We will not be required yet for the, uh, um, the moderate income housing component yet because of our size, but all cities, regardless of size, have to, um, change their subdivision ordinances. Uh, the larger cities have until February first of this next year, and we will have till the end of December of next year um, to have ours in compliance. And this is for, uh, this technical assistant grant is something that then a professional planners would come in and make sure that our planning commission has adequate resources to update our code to be in compliance with the state code before then the planning commission brings it before the council for a final vote, um, next year.
So I guess the the story is there is is, uh, before we just jump into redoing the ordinance, I mean, if we wait for about another a month, we'll know and maybe have has access to some state funding to help with that.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Carrie. Anything else from anybody on that? All right, uh, parks, trails and recreation. Another smashing Woodland Hills days.
That's city events, but yeah.
Well, recreation.
Yeah, recreation.
We felt recreated.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I didn't.
This is per a grant.
Oh, the grant. Um, I think everything's been in, everything's in on the grant and um, the sign is a sign in. We're waiting on the signage. Um, then we'll get to work up there. No.
Something that switchback.
We'll find that.
I didn't approve of. I don't think, Chris, or I approved the expense, but okay. Maybe it was done before. What? Yeah, I don't know.
Okay, anything else?
No, not there.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, city council reports, council member Hilliard?
Uh, with Public Works, we haven't met, uh, recently, um, though we have had, you know, thoughts and feelings around roads. Um, and hopefully we'll be able to figure. Oh, yes, exactly. Um, so kind of looking at that, what do what do we need to do to prepare for the winter, those types of things? So not much to report on that, though we are mindful of that and looking at it. Um, and then parks, trails and recreation. Um, just as Janet just said, we've worked on the, you know, the grant, utilization of the grant and getting everything ready. We have install dates scheduled, I believe, right?
October, the first of October, I think.
I believe so. So we'll be able to go up there. Anybody who's interested in joining us for that fun day of excitement and joy, we would love to have you. Um, the more the merrier.
Well, isn't it not?
Yeah.
So it might be the second one.
We'll, we'll get that clarified. Um, but yeah, that's pretty much everything I've got.
Great, thank you. Council member Keniston?
Um, so Ted and I met down at dispatch in regard to our city sirens. And, um, we met with five other people down there. Something has to be done and to be done, uh, before the early part of next year. Uh, as our sirens can't be operated from where they're sitting right now in their environment. So we have two choices. We can either move the control of those sirens over to where they used to be at at dispatch in a different building where Peter Quitner would be totally out of dispatch. And the operation of them would have to be done by someone other than people at dispatch. They, 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 shh. I don't even know how to put this right, but they they would rather not be bothered by our sirens to put them. And there's reasons for that. They have, um, call takers and they have to physically leave their desk and their phones to go take care of the sirens. So that's, it's not good where it is. To make a long story short. But if we move it over to Peter Quitner's area, it it might work there. The other opportunity we need to look at is, uh, moving it to this building. Um, that's not altogether the best decision either, but, uh, for example, we might not be able to get to this building in this time. The sirens need to be lit up, so. Uh, and then a third consideration is we'd like to find out if there was a way a phone could handle setting them off. That would be really nice if we had control remotely. All of those questions are, and and a decision, we probably need to meet with, uh, Andy or or Peter Quitner themselves in face to face and and get some, get some guidance from them. What else, Ted? We're just, we're just trying to keep them. It it's a, it's a, it's a struggle, but.
They were originally at this building.
Really?
At least, oh, that's my recollection. And then I think it was, um, Beth Wilding, when she worked down there.
Oh.
Was able to get them moved down to there. And we felt that that was better because it was staffed twenty-four seven.
Oh.
So that was kind of the thinking.
Huh.
I like the idea.
Yeah.
I don't know enough about the technology. But I kind of like the idea of having the base here. If, like you say, you can activate it somehow remotely, so you don't have to be physically here. In order to have that activated. And then, of course, if we ever did build a public works building down below, then that would be the ideal place for them.
Thanks for that.
I agree. I know that the situation with Peter Quitner, they're in the middle of building a brand new emergency management building as part of the sheriff's complex. But it has not been finished yet, and that's where they're thinking of moving this, uh, would be in that, but it might not, most likely will not be manned twenty-four seven like dispatch currently is. But, um, so I guess it's something just to further look and see if we want it with emergency management. If we want it here at the city or what we want to do. I remember when it was in the city prior to being moved down to dispatch as well.
Yeah, and there was a couple other comments that came up just in relation to how we locate them. Um, I I think first option was that that I liked was seeing if we could remote a base or a probation of somewhere and then work it remotely. I mean, you know, because then you can set it off anywhere, um, if you need to and give limited people access to that. Um, Chief Hells, who's the Spanish Fork Fire Chief, he was in that meeting too, and he made this suggestion, I thought was a good one too, is you probably want to have a redundant redundancy setup. Um, and there was some discussion about is there an opportunity to work with doing something down near the bell boxes or something like that, you know, where maybe there's some hard wiring in there that could facilitate something, but I don't know. But these are all options I think we will have to look into. Doro said dispatch, I think they're just they're short-staffed and they have trouble manning phones, let alone when they have to get up away from their phones and especially in an emergency event, try and operate this while they're manning phones and stuff like that, so.
Um, remember, we haven't had an emergency in a few years.
Yeah.
So it's really just the monthly things that they're having to deal with it, right?
Yeah, yeah. And she she brought up the point, she said, you know, if if there were a real emergency, our phones are even gonna be more busier with phone calls. And so we're gonna have to pull someone away from a phone that that we are already short-staffed with to operate this thing. Because you have to stand there and you have to hold buttons, then you have to push another button while you're holding one button and.
On the flip side, they'll also, they can communicate with more people through these things than they can with phones. So they'd save themselves a lot of phone calls too.
Possibly, but she, I mean, I guess the point is, their concern is just because they're so short-staffed and they can't find people. And, I mean, they they barely have enough people that they can't even handle hardly their phone calls now. And so pull someone away from a phone is just tough for them. And that was their, kind of their whole message to us.
Well, it sounds like they just.
Well, and that's, I mean, that's their worry. I mean, that the bottom line is, they're, they're updating their radio system. And with their update, it will no longer operate our system because ours is I don't know the whole workings of it, but we have to have a copper wire in there to operate this system, and they're not pulling copper with this new radio system they're updating to. And so there won't be wiring to facilitate this unit.
Last comment is it was mentioned that if we were to leave it out of our control with another agency like it is now, we need to do a contract so that we indemnify or whatever we would do so that nobody's liable if something goes wrong. So be aware of that.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Doral. Uh, council member Lund?
Um, a couple little things for Parks, Trails and Recreation. One of them is, um, we still have some broken playground equipment. And we've got a WASP issue at the pavilion. Um, the firemen had a little dinner and they had to deal with it, and then we had to deal with it for Woodland Hills days too. So I don't know, but maybe we could have our lawn people just attend to those two items, just a one-time deal. They're probably spending a little less time on lawns now that fall is approaching. Maybe they could just go and take care of that, but that is an issue that we're lacking in maintenance, general maintenance people, or maybe that could attend to it, but it it is an issue. It's been, there's some complaints, so we need to take care of that. Um, the other thing for Parks and Trails is that we had, we had a big buck that was collared that was killed up on the switchbacks. Um, the neighbors are, were kind of in uproar. It was a, it was a, it was a big, uh, it slept in their yards. Some of the neighbors' yards. It, and it's not just the one that you're thinking. But, um, we looked it up and in ordinance five five three, it says no discharging of weapons on city property. That is one of our ordinances. So we just wondered about putting a sign up there by the by the, you know, the switchback trail sign, just making another sign that says no discharging of weapons on city property and citing the ordinance that we already have in place. Um, to prevent that because and I'm not saying that it was illegally, it was arrow, bow and arrow, but I'm not, I'm not saying it was necessarily illegally shot, but the same kids who shot the deer also said that switchback three was impassable after the rain and they were on ATV. So it kind of implies that it was shot on city property.
Well, but if it was bow and arrow, that's not discharging of a weapon.
Yeah, I think it technically.
If you read the code.
We've got just the the people in, especially on deep forest like the Butters, some of those people, they were pretty upset about it because they were they just didn't, it's just really close to their homes and, you know.
Yeah, another comment with the bow and arrow. It's not unusual for deer to travel a long distance after being shot with a bow and arrow. So it could have legally been shot outside of the city limits and then traveled into the city and where it died.
Yeah, and I, and like I said, I'm not accusing, I'm not saying they did something wrong. I'm just saying we might should post it.
Jody, did you have something you were gonna say?
No, I'm not accusing anyone of doing anything wrong. I'm just saying, you know, the neighbors have a question.
That same same scenario, somebody bow hunting. The deer traveled all the way down to Carl Morley's property. And they gutted it on his lawn. I thought that was tacky. Yeah.
Not good. Well, there was quite a bit of blood in the, in the circle. There was quite a bit, there was quite a mess left behind from it.
So that's when we we investigated, could we eliminate hunting? And the answer is no, you can't. So it's kind of this funny gray area.
Well, because once you get off of city property and they're higher up, they can't do it legally.
Yeah, I know. It's it's really, really fuzzy.
Okay, but you're asking if we can put up a sign. I don't see.
Just, yeah, and I have the exact wording from the, and to cite the ordinance.
Okay.
And that way, you know, if someone did have hard evidence, at least we'd have some, you know, we'd say we posted it. You can't do that.
I mean, I don't know that the sign necessarily makes the punishment any worse if if someone's gonna go through the effort of
Like, do we have any fine associated with that by chance?
Yeah, I don't know. I can find out. I mean, we can look, but it's just, I, it's just something I wanted to bring up so we could think about it. Um, and then, yeah, city events and volunteers. We had Woodland Hills days. Um, it was really good. Um, everybody worked really hard. The Sliders were awesome. I've been really lucky, two for two for amazing chair people that just really took good care of it and did everything. I'm super grateful. Um, that doesn't mean it's not still a ton of work on my part too, but we had a lot of volunteers. Um, we added a parade this year. We added a five K. Um, you know, the parade, I think our city, me and also, you know, our city people, like the hope was that you would all have your own vehicle and decorate it and like be in the parade and make it a little more. But, um, it was fun to have the horses and I think, you know, the the public, um, vehicles and stuff. So the hope is that they can pull more people in. If they start doing it again, they used to do it before COVID, and then it kind of, we kind of got away from it. Um, you know, we talked about the fireman's breakfast, not as huge of a turnout as probably has been the last, since COVID, the turnout at the breakfast has been smaller. But if we could build up maybe the draw with some of the things like the parade, then maybe that would help the breakfast.
How was the J-Dog count? Was that?
We had two left over.
So it was, it was well attended.
Five ninety-eight, five hundred and ninety-eight dogs.
I thought it was a package of turnout, um, Janet. Thank you to, to, um, Mike and Roddy Slater for doing such a great job.
They were, they were phenomenal.
With the dinner, that said why they went to dinner. We won't be able to come to the breakfast. A lot of sports are happening and more and more people are going to huge sports, but those who do come absolutely love it. So I think that that's, um, that's, that's saying something right there. We have to anticipate that not everyone will be able to come, but there was a great turnout.
How much they loved it. And so I think, I think you did a great job.
Yeah, we, it was, I thought it was very well attended and there were a lot of people and we were having a hard time shutting it down at two o'clock. There were still quite a bit of people hanging around.
I remember, uh, you know, even before COVID, way back with Mayor Lawrenson there for a couple of years, it kind of died before he. it kind of died before he became the mayor and he resurrected it. So it, it, you know, it's like any event. Sometimes they have fits and starts and everything, but I really enjoyed it. I loved, I'm really glad that I was able to ride in the fire truck. We shot that crap right out of the road. It was awesome.
Well, Dave did.
Yeah, there's no we. That was you.
The mayor commanded him to do that.
And I, and I, you know, just since it's public record, but we have a lot of people that do things consistently year after year after year. And it sure makes my job and everyone else's easier, you know? We have Missy Flint. She does the booths every year. You just ask her, yep, I'll do it again. She's got it down. She marks them out. She just, we don't even have to think about it. We call her, say, will you do it? We're done thinking about it. And same with our rock wall, you know, SCSD, they give us money, they give us power, they give us water. We have to coordinate a little bit on the power. We have to tweak that a little bit each year, but they, they do a great job. They come out and they take care of all of it. So we have a lot of people in the community that really do things. I mean, the fire department, I just know they're going to take care of certain things. And so I'm just really grateful that they're consistent every year. And I just like publicly want to say thank you.
And Summer Creek?
Yeah, they were good.
I already invited them back next year.
I need to.
There are at least three of their members are local or have local ties. So that was really cool.
I need to repent as driver of the engine. Next time it's in a parade, we will have walkers on both sides. We had video show up that kids were rushing out to get candy and they got too close to us, you know? So we should have had people out. We should have had people out. We were really careful and slow, but, you know.
I had to really pay attention. Little kids kept running out in front of me. So I had to stop.
We will do better next year with, with walkers on, on.
Well, it was the first year and we were, you know, in a while, we were trying to figure it out. But I think, I think we can make it better, a little better every year. Anyway, that's it.
You can still ride Mayor and Dave, but we'll have walkers too.
Well, if he's hosing down horsemen who are on to parade watchers, I, I want no part of that.
Well, that's, that's a great.
That truck is so much fun.
Yeah. We got us a new member here. See, that's all the training you need, Dave.
You let me be, you, what, what, that's, that's the incident dude or something? You let me be that all the time.
Commander of the whole scene.
All right. Thanks, Janet. Carrie? Communication team?
If every, anyone has anything that they would like to put in the city newsletter, do please get it to me by next Tuesday so that I can get something out in a timely manner of that next week.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Pratt, Public Works Water?
Yeah, I don't have anything.
Okay, it was easy. Personnel for me, I don't have any updates. So possible upcoming agenda items.
One of the things in the public safety side is we, we need to find out what the current status of cameras are. Uh, we were looking at different avenues to get cameras and get pricing and get them installed. And I understand that Corbett might know something about cameras already in, in the process of being acquired. Anything going on?
Yeah, he's, his plan is to start next week. While you've been talking, I asked him if he could operate the sirens remotely. And he thinks he can.
He can or can't?
He cannot, he can.
Wow.
I mean, and, and you think about it, and if you can control your ring camera and you can communicate over your doorbell, why couldn't you do it remotely for sirens too?
Wow.
I'll, I'll, I'll put him in touch with you guys.
Yeah. Wanted to be to our meeting with Andy. Yeah, that's great news. So this means the public safety committee should not go into buying new cameras or organizing any purchases of, or looking into those. We're, you sound like we're far enough down the road that we better not, right?
We, we've already signed a contract.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we're, we're close to the finish line on this.
And we've paid for, we've made the, or the 50% payment.
Thank you. Thank you for that update.
All right. Possible upcoming agenda items? Okay. Anybody need a break?
No.
Okay, let's go right into the city council meeting then. So we'll adjourn the work session and call the city council meeting to order. And in so doing, Ben, would you offer the invocation and Janet, would you lead us in the pledge?
Yeah.
Our dear Father in heaven, we are so very grateful to come together as the elected body of Woodland Hills. We're grateful for thy sustaining support. We pray that we may continue to be worthy of it. We pray that thou will help us, that we may be able to make the decisions to which will give us the most prosperity for our city and will sustain us into the future. We pray that thou would guide us and give us the, the knowledge that we need or the directions or prompting so that we may be able to learn what the, those things are that we do need to learn and study. We pray that thou would watch over Carrie while she is away from us, that she may travel in safety and be able to return home in safety. We also pray for the members of our city, that they may be protected, that no harm or accident may fall upon them, that we may be protected through this fire season, that we may continue to have the rain that we have been so blessed to have and that we may be protected. But we love thee and we say these things with gratitude in our hearts in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Everybody peace and love.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we now enter the public comment portion of our meeting. Is there anybody here that would care to make a public comment? Going once. All right. And nobody online, right, Jody? Okay, then we'll close the public comment portion of our meeting and move on to item 16. City Council Meeting Minutes, August 8, 2023. Do you get a motion to approve those?
I'd make a motion to actually do 16, 17 and 18, the whole consent agenda.
Okay, wow. We're rolling it all together. Okay, a council member to do all consent agenda items by Councilmember Hilliard?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Pratt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those motions carry, or that motion carries. Item 19, Resolution 2023-26, establishing a community development committee.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Hilliard to adopt Resolution 2023-26?
I'll second it.
Janet, you should second it because I'm not there. It's fine. Okay?
Yep, I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Lund. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries.
I learned more. I changed my vote. So that's why I said yes. Yeah, I've learned more. Okay.
Uh, item 20, Resolution 2023-27. Jody, I mean, Jody, should I, as a matter of formality, call for a no vote, even though I saw everybody vote yes? Would you recommend or?
You're fine. You don't need to do a roll call.
Okay. But and even, even just as a formality, a navor, we're good with it. Okay. 2023-27, appointing members to a community development committee as proposed by Carrie. So that would be Rodman, Cloy Cleveland, Cody Chamberlain, Nate Myers and Kirsten Thompson.
I'll make a motion to approve those names.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Pratt.
I'll second those.
Seconded by Councilmember Kinnison. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Resolution 2023-28, appointing an individual to, or individuals to serve as building official for the city of Woodland Hills, designating Corbett Stevens and David Pratt as interim building official.
Well, Corbett as.
Yeah, Corbett as building official, David Pratt as interim.
Yeah, Corbett as permanent building official and David Pratt as interim building official.
For a three-week period.
For a short, short shelf life.
Yeah. And I don't know if you want to designate it for a three-week period or if you just want to go with interim.
Yeah, interim's fine.
Okay.
All retired after that.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Lund?
Someone has to second it. Carrie's not because she can't sign. She's not here to sign the papers, she said.
I re- 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 whatever that word is.
Recuse.
Recuse my vote.
Oh, I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Kinnison?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and so Councilmember Hilliard recused himself.
Though David has my support.
Thank you.
Building a house and it's.
Yeah. Okay, so that motion carries. Item 22, Resolution 2023-29, approving the June 2023 check dispersments.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Hilliard?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Lund. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Resolution 2023-30, approving a July 2023 check dispersments.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Lund?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Pratt. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Item 24, approval to spend ARPA funds on Broad Hollow well upgrade to three-phase power.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Pratt?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Hilliard. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote is also unanimous and carries. Okay. Well, with that, we can have a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Pratt?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Kinnison. All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned. Thanks, Carrie.
Thanks, Chris. Take care. Bye-bye.